Okay. Couple of housekeeping items. Dr. Schenker from Ulster Boses had prior arrangements for tonight. So he'll come to see us and talk about the Boses programs at the April... one of the meetings in April, I don't remember which day, but I think the first meeting that we have in April. And our athletic director is not here tonight. He had a prior engagement as well, but he did give me some notes just to help me explain some of the items that he has in his budget. And if there's anything that I can't answer tonight, I'll get answers for you for the next budget workshop. So I'll start off with the administrative budget. First of all, the Board of Education, line four, dues and publications. That's up primarily due to attendance at the Rural Schools Association and NISCUS. Line six, also attendance at the NISBA conference. Line eight, materials and supplies is up due to increased cost of the items and expenditures for the Board Appreciation Week and other items that have been coded in a different line in the past. We're just trying to clean up the budget as we go each year. Line thirty-four, the administrators retreat is up due to the retreat being off-campus. Line eighty-three, we're just moving some money around. We had coded document shredding in another line, so we moved it to that line. And the elementary school administrative materials and supplies is up due to expenses for student wellness days, kindergarten postcards, the CHAMP store, and also to cover the materials and supplies for the two additional administrators we have down there. Any questions so far? Okay, for special education, I'll go right through that. I have Ms. Matarazza, she'll be here tonight to answer any questions that you might have. Line forty-nine, so first of all, I'd like to say that, and I said this last time and I will continue to say it, that we don't really know what our special education budget is going to look like until we start the school year. We've seen students move in and move out throughout the summer, throughout the school year, placements, some new programs that Ms. Matarazza will mention tonight. So special ed is always going to be changing, but we do our best to estimate what it's going to look like for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The non-Boses special education line on line forty-nine, that's down because we no longer need nursing services outside of our Twenty-Eight Maple Avenue.
Non-Boses special education line.
Line fifty, special education Boses, that's up due to increased placements as well as we have about, I'd say, a dozen students, maybe ten or twelve that we have kind of pending in the wings. We're not sure what their annual reviews, what their meetings, their CSEs meetings are going to look like, so we just have a placeholder in that line. It's pretty significant, so you'll see that it went from a low number to, I think, three hundred or seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, three quarters of a million dollars, because we don't know where they're going to be placed. And once we do, we can certainly move the numbers around if we know it before we adopt the budget. I can do it then, and if not, then we'll have to do some budget transfers if we don't know where they're going to be placed. And once we do, we can certainly move the numbers around if we know it before we adopt the budget. I can do it then, and if not, then we'll have to do some budget transfers if we don't know where they're going to be placed. And once we do, we can certainly move the numbers around if we know it before we adopt the budget. So it's... On the top section?
On the presentation, it's slide number three.
Boses, non-Boses tuition, is it the top?
Correct, that's the private schools.
Right, okay.
Right, so I'm just kind of trying to go down this in order. On the top section?
Vince, can I ask a question if you're... Because we were just on line forty-eight for that. Forty-eight, forty-nine on the Boses special ed. I think we're all used to inflation at this point. Everybody understands it except for the governor. But the Boses special education program went up eight percent. And it's my experience over the last few years that every time we talked to Boses, there it increases above whatever the inflation is, which is hard to do right now. And when superintendent from Boses comes to speak to us, can we give a clearer definition of why these costs are going up as much as they are? I know special education is a fluctuating item, we're not really sure, but that's up over eight percent year to year.
Sure, so Dr. Schenker can certainly answer that when he's here. Boses does a really good job holding the non-salary-related COSRs to two percent. Sometimes they might have a vendor that we buy software from, that might be a little bit more. But the cost for special education and/or other Boses is typically driven by either enrollment, students being placed at either Sullivan Boses and Ulster Boses, could be Rockland Boses, it could be students at the Career and Tech. So a lot of those salary-driven, student-driven expenses is what's driving the expense up. Superintendent?
So when we're dealing with the increase of costs in special education or alternative school placements, I think the question, the pointed question is, are the increases from the increase of the unit cost or is the increase due to the number of students placed in these placements? So if you see that you have an overall decrease of ninety-six thousand dollars in non-Boses tuition in private schools, that went down about a hundred thousand dollars, but then if you look at another placement for Boses, so is it... I don't believe that the cost of the unit price cost went up that much. I think the number, and I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure it's the number of students placed in there. So I think we need a report for the board that shows them, is it the unit cost or is it the number of students moving around from placement to placement?
Lisa, are you referring to line fifty on the...
So they have...
Special education, that's the little question I had. It says total Boses special education. It seems like it's a four-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollar increase.
So there are two different documents?
Yes, but what I'm saying, there's another document that might show a decrease, right? We might have more students placed.
That's in another...
You know what I'm saying? So those placements are expensive. So if you have two more students or three more students placed at Boses and you have students that are not being placed in private, it could be a wash. So I think you have to look at, I think you need a full report on where every student is.
Those details are there. There's another document that shows every single line of every single Boses COSR. So whether it's the number of students, whether it's our enrollment of fourteen-fifty-five, which is their ARWADA, it's the cost per unit, there's another document in there.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the overall increase. It seems that every year it's fairly significant for Boses. And I guess what I'm asking, Lisa, is is it possible for us to take a look at additional programs that maybe we can handle in district? I realize that's tough to do, but it would save us money.
So we have done that, and when we can do it, we always do? But sometimes because of our size, we might have two students that go to a program, right? A specific program, and we can't start a program here with, let's say, a six-one-two. You know, six students, one teacher, two paraprofessionals, let's say. And then you have two students in that class, so we couldn't run a class like that. But I can tell you that I know that Mrs. Matarazza and we always talk about keeping in-house what we are. One of the things Mrs. Matarazza is going to talk about is starting a life skills curriculum, offering classes to students so that they can remain in our district in the seven to twelve. So that's something we're looking at, and I'm really being very deliberate because if you tell us that you can do it, you can do it, but you can't come to me in August and say, I need three more teachers or this, this, and that. So we're studying it very hard, as we always do.
Would we also consider sharing services with other districts? Maybe we have three, they have four, and we could do something like that.
We're doing that now.
Thank you.
Could just the board members make sure you speak into your mics? Some members of the public are texting saying that they cannot hear us at home. So make sure you speak.
In Board Docs, Agenda Item 1.2 has all of the supporting documentation that ties back into what I have up on the screen that's in the other document. So if you want to see the unit costs for special education, you would click on Boses-special education or Boses-other, and one of the items that I'll talk about, and it's a great opportunity for me to do it now, is, for example, Boses-other, line five, alternate education, the Phoenix Academy. That's up eighty-one thousand dollars. And you can see that in that document, the details were adding two additional students to the Phoenix Academy. Likewise, Career and Tech, that's up a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars. That's based on a three-year average rolling attendance in Career and Tech. And I can tell you that in my first year here as business official presenting, we wanted to see more students enrolling at Career and Tech. And we, our senior high school has done a great job getting students to go to Career and Tech up at Ulster Boses. So every year we see an increase, part of this due to the increase of the cost, but a lot of it has to do to the number of students that are enrolled in the program. Likewise, line number nine, which is, this is very exciting, it's a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollar increase, about a hundred-and-thirty-seven and a half percent at the Sullivan Boses Career and Tech. So that's heavy equipment operators, that's farming, those are agricultural. We have more students attending the Sullivan Boses Career and Tech than we've ever had ever before. I think we have either twelve or fifteen students slotted to attend the program there next year. That's pretty exciting, it's one of the things that we need. If you read anything on the news, we need more students going in, more people going into the trades. There's a lack of carpenters, equipment operators, and if our students can go and get the experience and get a job right out of high school, doing pretty well, that's the purpose of these programs. So we've, we talked briefly about the SWAP program or Stockade Works, that's arts and education. That's line nineteen. I think at the last budget workshop, we talked about TTP, that's a therapeutic transition program. Those are students with, those are programs for students with mental health needs. That is up significantly, a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars.
I just want to make a comment that at the last superintendent's meeting that we had, that services up significantly in the county and in the state, the therapeutic centers that treatment that students need. And one of the things we're still advocating towards more mental health services in the community for families outside of, the additional support for families in the county.
Vince, is that line nineteen?
We have a couple of decreases, and I'll jump right down to line one-nineteen and one-fifty-three. We were charged with looking for a new website or a new hosting company. We've talked about that, so that's in line one-nineteen. And we've also, to make our website and our internet presence better, we're going to be contracting with Ulster Boses to manage our website, our Facebook, all of our, everything that we have facing the public. So that's what you see in line one-fifty-three. That's why there's a pretty big increase there, we have never had that cost before.
Well, we've had, they have been managing our Facebook.
They've been, right, Facebook, but that's been part of an existing COSR. Before I jump down to athletics, I know that we had talked about a program for Ms. Matarazza to speak about. Did we cover that in its entirety? Do we want her to talk about it a little bit more about what the suggestion was or something for next year?
Do you want to hear more about the skills-based? Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Do you have any other questions or would you prefer just, I'll jump right into that piece? Okay, so of course, you know, nothing has been finalized. We've been working collaboratively at a curriculum for our seven-to-twelve population. We currently have a little over thirty-four students that we're looking at currently in district that are in self-contained classrooms, and there is a risk, you know, as they move forward that it is going to require them to be going out of district potentially to be able to get what they need. So we're looking at different ways that we can keep them in district. One of that being through the skills curriculum. It would not be a self-contained classroom, it would be a course that would be offered throughout the course of their day, potentially when they get to tenth grade, us making a determination together as a team if it's appropriate to keep them on the region's track. They would get the region's diploma and then also go to a half-day TOPS program to be able to do the school-to-work and get the CDAS there for the skills credential in that trade. Or if it isn't appropriate to stay on the region's track, they would go for the skills achievement credential, what is sometimes referred to as the SAC, and then also do the school-to-work program to get a CDAS as well. So this would allow us to keep that thirty-plus, and this is just seven-twelve we're talking about right now. As students come up from the elementary, you know, that number could increase. But keeping them in district, so we wouldn't have to send them out of district and being able to provide them with a different pathway that we haven't explored before, keeping them in district, so there would be a savings cost there as well, but also giving them a program that's going to give them skills so that when they do graduate high school, they have a trade that they can pursue and that they have skills to live independently and kind of be a better transition as they go post-secondary. So again, this is all just in preliminary stages right now, but it is something that we are looking at and working out details to see if it's something that we can bring to the district.
Anybody else? John?
No.
Okay. Good?
Okay, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
Move on to athletics. The biggest chunk of costs for athletics is in the regional office of athletics, which includes sports pack, their administrative staff, processing fees for official payments, Mahal league dues. And we've also added Huddle, which is, and we've added sports to Huddle and allows, so you're nodding, yes, you know, Huddle is, it's a great way for, it's the recording of athletic events. It lets the coaches download a game, watch it, analyze it, kind of like what the pros do when they're looking at or scouting, they're going to compete against a team or how their players did at the last game. So it's a great way for the coaches to sit down and look at how their players did. Other than that, athletics, Mr. Chason did a great job keeping the cost flat.
John?
Thank you. And I guess I can get these questions to Mr. Chason, and I'm not blaming Mr. Chason. I think he's done a great job stepping in as an interim athletic director. But I do have some concerns. Our sports increases have gone up, yes, the regional office and those types of things are up, but so are chaperones, scorekeepers, and timekeepers. And I'm wondering how our costs are jumping up when we have more and more individual sports that we're not fielding teams in. And so I looked at the sheet that you put out here, Vince, that talks about our history of enrollment. And here's some facts that I think we need to take into consideration. Since two thousand and ten, we've lost student population every year, year to year. Losses ranging from point-two percent to four-point-seven percent. And in that thirteen-year period up till this year, we've gone from seventeen-hundred-and-sixty-two students in our district to fourteen-hundred-and-thirty-eight, a loss of three-hundred-and-twenty-four students. The projections over the next seven years is that we'll lose an additional hundred-and-sixty-five or more students, putting us down possibly into the twelve-hundreds. And so my concern, and I'm fully supportive of athletics, is why our costs continue to go up and the number of teams that we're putting out there is dropping, as is our number of students. And so perhaps when Mr. Chason comes back, he could explain that to us because I just don't think it's fiscally prudent of us to continue to have these costs go up when our athletic program numbers are going down.
We could certainly, I'll work with Mr. Chason to run the numbers on how many games we have. There's a cost for the chaperones, if you have more games, there's more expenses, there's their hourly rate, there's the cost per event. So we can certainly put together some numbers for you so you can actually see how these numbers are tracking. So that should not be a problem when...
I think another report that would be helpful for the board is when you look at the stipends on what's budgeted, because I know we budget what we think we're going to have, but sometimes we can't field a JV or a modified. So just because the budgeted numbers in there doesn't necessarily mean we're going to spend that number. But I think an important piece of information for the board is to show them, you know, which teams we budgeted for, which teams we fielded, and where we are at that. Because we know as enrollment continues to decrease, we're not going to be able to field what we have, right? There's, we're talking about that. There's less students, the same number of teams, more competition. So those numbers compared budget to what actually gets appointed and used during the year is key. So I think that's important for me to hear that.
Right, I made a note, we can certainly do that. And the one thing that I don't want to do is not budget for something and then find out that it happens, that for whatever reason, I can't predict what next school year is going to look like. So if I say sport, blah, 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 is not going to field next year, and then it does, and I haven't budgeted for it, now I'm moving money around, and I'd rather not do that.
It's more of a systemic issue that we're looking at here, how to move forward with it.
Well, I would think that if that happens and we don't field teams, then we certainly would have a lesser spending on our budget.
Definitely.
But things like transportation to away contests for teams that have half the number of students that should be participating in that sport. Like if you had, you know, one of the minor sports, I don't mean minor in that sense, but like a golf or a tennis, if we're sending two or three kids and we're sending a bus somewhere for that, that's something I'd like to see enumerated here as well.
Understood, anything else?
That's good, thank you.
You're welcome. Buildings and grounds, the big ticket item, I'll jump right down, actually, there's two of them. I was asked last week, why are we, why are the SROs coded in buildings and grounds? Under capital, that's where we have all the business office contractual expenses, insurance, safety and security, and that's why the SROs are budgeted there under the contractual line. And as well as debt service, which, the debt service I'll jump into briefly in a second. What's really driving our tax levy increase has to do with the principal and interest. Whether you buy a car, you buy a house, you've got the principal, what it costs you to borrow that money, that we have to budget for, and we're getting more into our capital project. We've started our second capital project, we've already borrowed to pay for what we've done so far. We still have another... So, and then we'll be borrowing more money to finish the project. So our debt service, principal and interest, will be added every year for the next couple of years until we're done building. Transportation is up significantly due to CPI. Our health insurance rates have been finalized, so I've been able to work that into the budget. So that's always a comforting number to know, so I can plan on that going forward. And then while it's kind of hard to read up here, I know I touched on it briefly, but I just wanted everybody to have another copy of what the tax cap formula looks like. In a nutshell, to make this as simple as possible, everything from lines one through line seventeen, consider it one part of the tax cap formula, and then lines nineteen down through line thirty-one, we'll call that the second part. And you can see that our tax levy limit actually went down point-three-eight percent. However, when I add in all of the allowable exemptions, that could be a big increase in the teacher's retirement system, the employee's retirement system, or our local share, what it costs us for our principal and debt payments outside of state aid, all those numbers can be added in at the bottom, and that's why our tax cap jumps up from a negative three-point-eight percent, and it's actually at four-point-nine-five percent. But we're looking at not levying the full amount, but actually levying four-point-five-two percent. So I know we went over that in a little bit more detail last time, but I thought this would be a great opportunity to put that, the formula up, so people can look at it. If you wanted to dissect it, I could certainly sit down with anybody individually. The next meeting is March twenty-eighth, that'll be a full budget overview. I'll go through a lot of these, everything that I've covered over the last couple of weeks. Hopefully, we'll have other numbers from the state, not really sure yet. Hopefully, we'll get an on-time budget, and I'll note definitively by then. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there being no further questions, we will, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the budget workshop and reconvene to public meeting at seven-thirty. Second, all in favor? Opposed, no one? We're adjourned. Call the meeting to order, please rise or pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will call for a motion to accept the minutes of the March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries, public forum for this evening? Call to the podium, Grammy Singer? Gammy Singer, brother? Talk about pre-K.
Good evening. You know, I never get to say, or I never say, how much I appreciate the school board. I just want to tell you that, how many hours you spend, your volunteerism, okay? And I also want to let you know that, just think of NAACP as another arm of you, or a small tentacle or whatever. Yesterday, we were supposed to go to Albany every year. All the units in New York City descend on Albany to lobby for certain things that are on the NAACP agenda. And I want you to know that even though we weren't able to because of the snow, we did have a Zoom meeting with Senator Alberaker. And we talked about and lobbied for more money for Career and Tech. And we also lobbied for money for vision therapy, comprehensive exams. I brought it up with this board a while ago. Eighty-five percent of chose students are misdiagnosed and put into special ed because of vision problems. One in four students has vision problems. This is not just seeing acuity, but it's other things. They see words jumping, they don't track across, they don't track down, a lot of things that come up. So it's something that we feel is important, and Ellenville hasn't quite gotten started on that, but I still have hope, okay? The thing that I wanted to talk about, though, was pre-K. As you mentioned, the enrollment is down, and I've heard there's going to be a, what do you call it? You know, some kids are going to be able to go to pre-K and some not because of lack of room. And I'm wondering why, if the enrollment is down and we had pre-K back when, why there isn't room for all students to be able to go to pre-K? That's question number one. And what will happen to pre-K when the work starts on the building? Is that going to be extinguished, or is there going to be room then, or what's going to happen? And there is the last thing, will there be a plan to ensure that kids are able to get to school? Because I think that was one of the drawbacks before when pre-K was initiated. So those are the questions.
Thank you, Gammy. If you want to just remain, I'm going to have the superintendent address it.
Yep, so...
Yep. So we are looking at a pre-K program moving forward. We are changing the model that we had, and we're following the guidelines from the state. So I just want to say, and I had spoken to the board about this at a meeting, we put it up so that everyone could see it. When you look at the allocation of pre-K, it looks like there's a lot of money there, right? Like five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But in actuality, they break it down on a per pupil basis, so it's like ten thousand five hundred dollars per pupil. Of the amount that we are going to fund internally, there's also a ten percent set aside for outside agencies, and we, there is one agency that's interested in participating in those funds. That being said, the model we're changing to is we had, when we had pre-K years ago, we had four half-day classes, two AM, two PM. When the economic crisis hit, we had to do away with the transportation midday, and that had a significant impact on attendance and enrollment. So this year, we're changing the model, and we're going to a full-day program, one class, full day. We, the reason why room is an issue is even though we are declining, there are more services, individual services that are given. So we've added social workers and counselors, we have speech, we have six reading teachers down in the elementary schools. So over the years, even though we're using less classroom space for, you know, full-sized classes, we are using the space for related services. And we have PT, OT, speech, so all of those providers need space to be in. We used to have the Bosse's Building, if you remember correctly, out on Pass where the, and that was in terrible shape, and it was Bosse's, so we lost six classrooms there, right? So that we used to do some related services and other classes there, so we lost that. That being said, we are looking at space, and we're trying to build this. And the requirements from the state are definitely more rigorous with regard to curriculum, what's provided to the students, and the accountability back to the state is significant. So we're starting with one class of eighteen students, so it'll be a teacher, a TA, and eighteen students. Going to pilot it out this year, see how it works. And we're predicting that, we're projecting, not predicting, we should be able to, after the building, construction project's done, we might have some more classrooms because the new cafeteria is being built, the library is going into where the cafeteria exists now, down on that end. And then that whole library section will be able to re, it's going to be rebuilt so that we can put related services there, which will free up some classrooms. So we think after this, we should have some room for it. We also, when students are here full days, they get specials and lunch, so there's a lot of scheduling. That, you know, with the new cafeteria, it should be very helpful for us. So we're starting it one year. I know it, we want more. And I will say this, even with the allocation of the money, the, there's a local share that we have to pay. It's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, of taxpayer dollars that are going into pre-K along with the grant money because of the way the grant is, you know, because of the way the UPK is lined up. And we've had conversations, and Superintendent, associations and others have had conversations about the allocation of UPK money, and it's a little bit misleading to put that number there and then to limit how much the school districts could use based on a per pupil number.
How many, how long do you think you will not have pre-K? Well, how do you say the building was going to affect it after that, after it's done?
So, so what we're projecting is we're going to have pre-K. We're planning on having a pre-K class this September, one class. Between this September and next summer, not this summer, next summer, we'll redesign the library. So in the fall of twenty twenty-four, after the summer work, the summer construction of twenty twenty-four, we might be able to add a couple of classes in twenty twenty-four. But we're planning on it, and we're excited about it, and we want to expand it, and we'll figure out a way to do it. And the plan to ensure that students can get to school is there. They'll be provided transportation coming in and transportation coming out.
Thank you, Ms. Singer. I'll call up to the podium, Ms. Susan Ireland, P-Tech update.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. I brought three of our Chapter Two scholars with me. I'll introduce them to you, and they'll be speaking to you as well this evening. So I have Marcus, and I have Allen, and I have Kwaku. So they will be interjecting as we go through the slide deck, as well as speaking to you personally about their experience of being in P-Tech. So being Chapter Two, that means that they are a sophomore and that they are in their second year. So they are from the first group that's ever been in P-Tech. So as you know, P-Tech was founded last year. We have, it started three years ago, but last year was our first chapter. And the students have two pathways they can choose from, network administration or manufacturing. So what is P-Tech? P-Tech is a six-year program where students are getting their high school degree as well as a college education, a two-year associate's degree, okay? Currently, we have thirty-eight students, eighteen are Chapter Twos, and twenty are in Chapter One. And we currently have twenty-two to twenty-four interested for the next chapter for next year. These students are working with industry partners. We have the Council of Industry, and we have many industry partners that work with us and partner with us so that they can get real-life experience through workplace learning challenges and workplace learning, which goes on simultaneously with not only their high school classes, but they start taking college classes in their freshman year, their first chap, the first chapter of P-Tech, okay? What this does for our kids is in the end, after they do these, they're doing their workplace learning challenges, I tell them it's like a job interview when they're going to them because these workplace partners of ours are actually watching our kids. How are they performing? Can they answer questions? How do they act as they're in there? And they're watching them because in the long run, they are going to probably be working for one of our industry partners in the end. It's a marvelous experience for these kids and an opportunity like no other. So this is our Chapter One, these are some, these are actually some of our Chapter Two kids, I believe, from last year. But we have the Chapter One students with eighteen, like I said, Chapter Two has, Chapter Two has, excuse me, Chapter One has twenty students, Chapter Two has eighteen students. And they are out and about, talking to other kids. We've had students come and talk with the kids in the hallway, in the cafeterias. They come and talk to me as well, and to Courtney Vandermark, who is our counselor. And by word of mouth, we're growing the program. So this is a picture of the students at SUNY Ulster on one of their visits. We take them so that they can see where they're going potentially, get a feel for what the college campus looks like. They go there and work with HVPA, which is the Hudson Valley P-Tech Academy. They do their workplace learning challenges with them, and a lot of times we have our reveals there, which is when the manufacturer, or the industry partner would come and reveal whatever the challenge is. And then they get to work there a little bit, and then they come back, and they have workplace learning time during their schedule, that they build whatever the challenge is. On Monday, we're taking a field trip to Bosse's so that our students, both chapters, can see the facilities there so that they can make an educated decision as to which pathway they'd like to go on. Again, as I said, there are two pathways currently, manufacturing technology as well as network administration. Okay, so I'm going to let Allen talk a little bit more about workplace learning, so this is Allen, Ebrich.
Good evening.
Can you pull up the microphone so that everyone can perfect?
As you go now.
Talk closer into it.
Sorry about that, but we all get yelled at.
Good evening, my name is Allen Ebrich. I'm here to talk to you about workplace learning. Workplace, well, P-Tech in general is just different from like traditional schools. Like, we do workplace learning and project-based learning. And our most recent workplace learning challenge was with Ametek Rotron, and we had to create a design to transport their fans, because they make fans for the US military and stuff like that. So we had to make a design to safely transport them to testing, because when they transport them, they would get damaged or chip. So that's just like one of the examples that we do for workplace learning. And workplace learning also like has helped me and like everybody else in P-Tech to like be more confident with speaking in front of other people because it provides us with like new experiences and talking to people who are ranked highly and like important people. And we learn these things by like working well together and doing these projects.
Ms. Ireland, if I may, is it okay to ask questions?
Sure, sure.
If I could ask, Allen?
Allen.
Come back.
Willie, can you just speak in dear?
So Allen, outside of school, what benefits do you see in participating in the P-Tech program? Would you have been able to stand in front of an audience as you are now and speak publicly?
I don't think so. I don't think I would be able to, because I remember last year, and I think I was speaking for all of P-Tech. Last year, we all were like extremely nervous. I remember our first presentation, we were all presenting in front of just our classmates, just like twenty people that we all knew like our entire life. And we were all extremely nervous, and a few students like before would like start like crying because of like stress and anxiety, and now like we go there and just do extremely well. And I see it just in like normal, like general, just like the way I speak to people and like the more confidence I have, even just like in family, like, like, you know, just speaking up more about like family conversations and things like that, and being like more involved socially, just in general. It's not just like when presenting to industry partners and things like that.
It's an overall confidence.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, experience like a lot more confidence.
Thank you. And does that go for, your colleagues, that they're great?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I had spoken about how the industries are looking for more employees in these two pathways, and that's the main reason why these two pathways have been chosen by the Ulster County industries. Before they actually get to work for one of them, they will be doing internships. So next year, they will be, these three and their other fifteen classmates will be taking classes part of the day here, and then either going to Bosse's or SUNY Ulster for taking the rest of their classes. So they start right off, they'll be juniors, and they'll do that in their senior year. And then in year five and six, they will still be part of Ellenville P-Tech. They will always be part of Ellenville P-Tech, but they will be part of them. And they will still be able to come here and be part of our community. But they will be going to Ulster to finish up their degrees. They'll be doing year five and six there. It's just an invaluable experience for all of these kids, and to watch them grow from last year to this year is amazing, just amazing. So these are some other industry partners. The picture, the large picture was the first workplace learning challenge for our students who are scholars for the first year, Chapter Ones. And we went to Viking Industry, and they were tasked with making some kind of a design for a display box. And Viking Industry only makes corrugated, you can't say cardboard, I learned a lot as well, corrugated packaging. And it had to be a display package. It couldn't just be a box to put these candles in, it had to be for display. So they worked in groups of four, and they were given the supplies, and they made them. And then we went, and they had to speak to the founder of the company, and this is the woman, for her candles. And then around them in the back, there were all kinds of people from Viking Industry as well. So they even had their design group there, so quite an experience for these fourteen-year-olds. Over here on the side, this was the Viking packaging from Chapter Twos, so the gentlemen behind me were involved in that, and that was an exercise piece of equipment that looked like a heart, and had two handles on it. And they were tasked, again, to make a corrugated package for it to be displayed in. And then down below, you've got, I believe that might even be Allen there on the right, doing a presentation in front of his peers, right in P-Tech. And these are just some of our partners at this point. Last week, I went with the Chapter Ones, and we went to IBM, and they presented to IBM. And again, they were tasked with finding a better way to move product from one section of the IBM warehouse to another because they were having a difficult time getting it there in a reasonable amount of time. And every time we go someplace, we also get a tour of the actual corporation, whether it's manufacturing, whatever it is. And the kids really, it's eye-opening, and they get to learn a lot. And it's not just, like I say to them, it's not like the old Laverne and Shirley where the candy's going down the conveyor belt, if we all remember that. So it's amazing the things that they're doing right here in Ulster County. So these are some of our core values. Of course, we want our kids to all be wonderful individuals and have great citizenship, but awareness, exploration, preparation, employability, and demonstration are the five key components that we're looking to help grow with these students through the P-Tech program. So I'm going to let Marcus talk about workplace learning challenges and what he thinks about them, just so that he can also have a little time to talk to you about how he feels about P-Tech as well. So this is Marcus.
Hi, good evening. My name is, good evening, my name is Marcus Louzavera. I am a Chapter Two young scholar here in the P-Tech program. And one of the things I'd just like to say before, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity and letting us be here. And I also want to say thank you if you guys are watching, Ms. Cahill, Ms. Artley Learners, Ms. Cahill, Ms. Burnbaum, and Mr. Disarmay, along with Ms. Santiago, and Ms. Gillis, and Ms. Ireland, of course. Without them, I don't think we'd be able to be here and doing this, as well as being able to build this experience altogether. And yeah, I just want to say thank you to them. So one thing I, one of my personal experiences from this program is it would definitely be the fact that I've been able to see my growth from the beginning of when we started in ninth grade to now, and being able to see that progression from when we started till now. And one of those things from a thing like this is the WPL, I just want to say, is that one of those things is that we're able to see, like I said, the progression from when we started and until now. The workplace learning challenge has definitely impacted us. And especially like, one thing I think is important too for me and everyone else in the program is that we're able to make decisions in our life that are going to be able to benefit us in the future. Like making the decision, being able to be in the P-Tech program, I feel like is a really important decision because it impacts us in future decisions like that, and being able to, you know, give us, how do I say? Like, it benefits us in a way where we're able to make decisions in our future, basically. And being able to be in eighth grade and saying like, I made the decision for my future to be in a program like this where it's going to benefit us, so that's definitely important to me. And I feel like it's definitely important to a bunch of us in the program as well. And WPL has definitely helped me with being able to speak into a crowd and just being more confident myself in general and overall life, as Allen was saying, reiterating what he was saying. And yeah, thank you.
Marcus, if I, again, Marcus, I'm sorry, I'm going to be asking questions. I love this program, and I thank you all for coming back and giving us the feedback. I think it's one of the most important investments we make as a district. Why P-Tech? Why did you choose P-Tech as an eighth grader?
So why I would definitely say why I chose P-Tech was for the fact that I'm able to see, you know, people who might not, you know, when they're in high school, maybe they might be my friends, or if anything, they might have, you know, some problems or some issues where they're able to, they're able to go through the high school experience, but I feel as if like some, nothing really drives them maybe, if it is. And I feel like one of the things for me with P-Tech was like the pathways and being able to see that six-year, it's a six-year program that gives us free college, I think it was a really, it's a great opportunity for us. So, you know, being in eighth grade and just being able to see, you know, why not, you know, try it? You know, and if it's something that doesn't, it's something that we might not see, you know, impact us at all, then it might not impact us, but it's for our future, so we must, we've got to try it, you know?
It's quite a commitment, and you're And you're in chapter two now. How has, how have you handled having to separate, for lack of a better term, from your cohorts here in tenth grade back at Ellenville in the standard programs? How do you, how do you deal with that?
One way I definitely deal with that is, you know, just saying myself like, if I'm in this program, I'm gonna commit to it. And I'm not gonna let any outside forces, you know, affect that in any way. Even if it's, you know, maybe not hanging out with my friends I see in school every day. And being able to be separated, you know, in the middle school as we are. And, you know, being able to be all together in our P-Tech program. We kinda feel like we've built, we've built the experience. And it's like we're all the family in there. And I just think that it's one of those things where if you commit to it, you could easily do it and you're all together with the people, like I said, with our program. And as well as the fact that my friends outside of P-Tech, you know, I still might not be able to, be able to see them as much in school. But at the same time, we're all going our separate ways. And it's like, it's life in general, you know, you might not always, I feel like you might not always be going the same road or same route as your friends. But you're still, you know, pushing forward and doing your own thing.
So do you feel you've built connections in the P-Tech program?
A hundred percent.
And your connections that are not in the P-Tech programs, that they have not suffered?
No.
Those friendships have not suffered?
No. I feel like we're all, like I said, we've built an experience here and it's our, we're the pioneers, bro. We basically, for the first time, we're the P-Tech program here in Ellenville. So I feel like, you know, it's a, it's a good thing, it's a good experience.
Thank you.
So one of the things that he just alluded to is that they are a family. And we talk about this all the time, that when they came into P-Tech last year, they kinda all looked at each other like, hmm, this is, this is our group. And now, they've got each other's backs. They look out for each other. I can tell you that last year, if you don't mind me saying, Marcus suffered a very bad injury. And he was, he was out of school for quite a while and had crutches and came back. And he never missed a beat. And it wasn't just because he had the drive himself. But the P-Tech chapter-one kids, they just pulled together and were family. They're brothers and sisters and they take care of each other. So it's great, it really, it's a great program. They also, I'm gonna say also, you're looking at three athletes. They all play sports here, so that's another way that they keep with their other peers. I can tell you that the SUNY Ulster basketball coach is already breathing down my neck wanting these kids to play basketball for him. So they already have that opportunity waiting for them on the other end as well, so, which is great. So this is project-based learning, we do all, also do some other things. We took both chapters to the Metropolitan Museum of Art this year. And they studied history through art. So that was a great experience for them. It was around Christmas time, I believe it was the twentieth of December. So they also got to take a ride on the bus, we didn't get off, but, and also see the lights and see Rockefeller Center and see the tree, which was an experience for a lot of these kids for the first time. The other picture is the robotics. And we also, they also do a chapter in robotics with Brian Feduk. And this is them building their robots last year. I believe you can see Kwaku in the background there with his tan pants on. And they are trying out their robots here. So it's, it's, you know, there's learning through ways that you wouldn't learn possibly in other classes. There are opportunities here for these kids that they wouldn't have otherwise. So here's some parent testimonials and if you'll look at the kids, we've got, you know, they're participating in all kinds of things. That's Alan and is that, is it John? Okay, John. Jonathan Torres, who's, this is what his mom said. Then we have some chapter ones building their robots here just this past week. And then this is a group of the chapter ones that were upstairs during Student Wellness Day, making fuzzy necklaces with me. So I just love what the parents say, "I'm extremely proud of my son Jonathan. He has become independent in his learning, he's dedicated to his education and works hard at getting good grades." "I see his friends who are also in P-Tech and I'm amazed at the great young men they have all become." That was from Carmen Torres. Here's another one, this is from Phoebe Baker's mom. Phoebe is the young lady in the middle over on the left. Her mom said, "My daughter Phoebe is moving, is more social and taking more initiative as a leader role in her group. She loves when they compete against the other P-Tech school. She loves going on the field trips." And then, so this is, they were talking about their bridges. This was their project from this first portion of September. And they were tasked by the P-Tech lead learners to build a bridge and to discuss how they are bridging from chapter one to chapter two. And that was, that was a great experience for them as well. And down below, this is the P-Tech group speaking in front of the IBM people that are around the table. And that was a great experience. They got to meet actually a P-Tech student who now works at IBM that came out of Brooklyn, the very, the original P-Tech program. This is from Marie Pecal. Her son is also a chapter two. This is Eli up here in the corner. "We chose to enroll our son in P-Tech because he wanted to attend a program geared towards his academic and future career interest. He looks forward to a small class group and starting college courses sooner. As parents, we wanted a program that also focused on character, leadership, teamwork, creativity through projects, and going on class trips with learning experiences." That was from Marie Pecal. So here's some young scholar, these guys are gonna give you their testimonials. But I'll let you guys read these and talk about your peers instead of me doing it. So, would you like to start?
So I'm just gonna remind you, because Mr. L is in our ear. If you could hold the microphone up or you could even take it off and speak into it if you'd like. But our phones buzz if they can't hear you.
Hi, my name is Kwaku Bahin and I'm a scholar in the P-Tech program. I'm originally from, I'm originally from Africa, Ghana. And when I came here, I didn't know anybody. Like, I didn't have any experience of being in the United States. So P-Tech really helped me a lot through like, sorry. P-Tech helped me through a lot of experiences. I could not speak in public. I, I made a family. These are, these are my best friends, Marcus and Alan. We, we were super close. And I didn't, I was not a people person during, when I came here. But now I'm fully, I'm friends with everybody in this school.
All right, so Kwaku, Kwaku has made great friends, everybody knows Kwaku. And we are so fortunate to have him as part of our P-Tech program. Everybody just loves Kwaku. So Paula Morales is a chapter-one scholar right now. And she says, "I like the teamwork we have, we all have. The program has positively impacted me. Because when I was in eighth grade last year, I didn't have many friendships. I liked to stay to myself, but now that I'm in P-Tech, I have a lot more friendships and I've built up the courage to talk more." Paula has talked to me, she wants to be a nurse. And she said, "Well, neither of these pathways really lead me to nursing." So we were at IBM last week and one of the senior IBM executives said, "I don't hire nurses unless they have a background in manufacturing. They need to understand their clientele." So that was very telling for Paula. Emily Raban said in chapter two, "What I like about the P-Tech experience is the amount of support we get." They get a lot of support, one-on-one. There are so many lead learners in P-Tech to help around. So they do, we have a lot of lead learners, there's a lot of support, and they're always available.
Ms. Ireland, what's a lead learner?
Lead learner is what they call, I don't know who's talking, John, Mr. Burns. A lead learner is their teachers. Who said that? Did you, I'm sorry, I just heard it as I turned my head. All right, so a lead learner is what they call a teacher. They call the kids scholars. It's just the language.
The terminology.
The terminology, language of P-Tech.
Gotcha.
Okay. So the next one was from Phoebe Baker, again, and she said, "I like how practical P-Tech is." Her mom was one of the parents that had a comment. "In this program, we hone skills at a young age while most people don't learn them until they're older. An example would be the bank project where we learned financial terms that the majority wouldn't learn until they tried purchasing a home. We still learn all we need in the core subjects. There's also a large emphasis on building skills that are applicable in the workplace." That would be Phoebe Baker. And over here are all the students at the Met. And then, this is Anna, and she and I were twinning when we went to IBM. We had jackets on with our P-Tech shirts and so they took our picture. Is that it? Okay. So, any questions for any of us?
John? Yeah, thank you, Ms. Ireland. I think that this is a blue-ribbon program and we're all very proud of you guys for what you've done. And we jumped into this and approved this. And so I have a couple of questions. I think we can all agree that most kids finishing their eighth-grade year have no clue what they wanna do in life. And, and yet, you, you were presented with a six-year program. It had to be a little daunting, thinking that you were gonna come out of eighth grade and go through six years. And so what I wanna ask you, as you guys are in your chapter two, is it go chapter three, four, five, six? Okay, as you're in chapter two, what's it like at such a young age to be able to see your future?
It was an opportunity for me and I took it.
I think it's like a great opportunity because like, it's extremely interesting because I kinda have like this, this layout of what I wanna do for my future. And like many, there's many careers that can like be opportunities for what we're doing. Like the, like the manufacturing, that's engineering and like lots, lots more. So it's, it's interesting. And like, as we grow, like, you know, we haven't like made our final decision yet. Like, we still have time to make that decision. But like, we're also getting our prerequisites and we're finishing, we're two years ahead of the game. So I just think it's, you know, like, if you wanna be a teacher, you need a masters for more, like you're two years ahead and that's two years of more money. And, you know, you're just ahead and ahead and ahead. So I just think it's a great opportunity.
Like you said, in the eighth grade, it's just, I had no idea what I was, you know, what my future would look like at all. And I feel like this program's definitely helped me, you know, be able to shape what it's gonna look like. And it's definitely helped me in multiple other ways and just, you know, being able to say that. I'm looking forward into my, my success in the future. And it's basically just set up my, set up like what it's gonna look like in the future for me. So that's definitely, and what the experience looked like here, it's just like, in our age right now, I feel like it separates us from a lot of other people who might, you know, not be looking at their future. And like I said before, it's just, it just sets us up for success, I feel like, a hundred percent.
Thank you, I just think it's such a credit to you guys that you can sit there and talk like you can. When I was in eighth grade, I didn't know what to do after lunch. And you guys have it all plotted out. Susan, I have two questions for you if you don't mind. One was, could you talk about the support that the chapter twos give the chapter ones? Because when you guys were chapter ones, you were very unsure of what was going on. How does that support group work?
Well, interestingly enough, because they were our first group, they had no one but us, you know? And at the time last year, I was their Spanish teacher. So I, I knew them all last year in P-Tech through that avenue. So this year, there's a, there's opportunities when they do mix and they do have a chance to mentor each other. And, but they also have, you know, they're on separate paths. Like, this group, by the end, I don't know if I said this, but by the end of their sophomore year, by the end of chapter two, they have their five regencies that are required in order to graduate completed. They've taken all of those and gotten them out of the way, check. At the end of their first chapter, they have their first college class taken, check. So they then can start, you know, thinking about that. So do they, they mingle, but they don't. They're in the same, we're in the same hallway, they have the same teachers. Some of them are tutors, some of them are in the after-school program in P-Tech and tutor the chapter ones. So that's, you know, quite an accomplishment for them. And that builds those bonds also. But the chapter one, know that they're there for them, they need them.
The last question I had was, I think one of the concerns we had when we started this program was a retention and the ability to keep kids in program. Obviously, some kids come in and then realize it's not for them. I noticed that in the chapter one, you have twenty, chapter two, you have eighteen. So it seems like that's, you said, we're growing with it. What did we start chapter one with last year?
Chapter one, I believe, had twenty-two, help me, twenty-two. We lost one, one person moved away and then came back, so was out of the program. And three were not successful.
So there's optimism that we can continue to grow the program and keep it going? Great, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Iris?
Thank you very much, it's a pleasure to hear you speak to us. I was wondering if you could just give us a briefly explain how students get into this program?
Okay, so we are right now canvassing. And we had Courtney Vandermark go into all the eighth grade just to outline coursework for ninth grade. So one of the avenues is through Courtney, speaking to them and offering them P-Tech. I can tell you though, the very first place that I started getting names was Open House. This year, when we did our fair outside and the P-Tech table, there were parents that were telling, we had a list, we had a piece of paper you could sign up there. Or people were seeking me out and saying, "I really want my child to be on P-Tech." I have, I have three or four on a list that are in fourth grade right now. That their parents already want to make sure that they're on the list and that we can talk about it again and revisit it when they get to the eighth grade. The other, the other avenue is siblings. So I can, I know that Marcus, your sister's coming in next year. I know that I already have, I think we'll have three sets of siblings. We have one now and one in chapter one and a chapter two. So a lot of times, the parents and the younger siblings are seeing what value it is and they want to be in it too. Some kids just come up to me and say, "Can you talk to me more about P-Tech? What's P-Tech? I think I wanna do P-Tech." So we are going to have like a, almost wanna call it like a shadow day where they, a student that really is interested can come and spend a couple of periods of the day just to see what P-Tech looks and feels like for them.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
If not, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Ireland, for taking the time to come talk to us and the three gentlemen you have there with. It's a pleasure to have you guys come here. The hardest thing you'll ever do is speak to the public, so y'all did a fantastic job.
Well, we appreciate the offer to come and we'll be coming back again next year to fill you in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to reports and correspondence. I'd like to get an update, Hall of Fame Committee, where are we? Yep, John? Thank you. So as I mentioned last meeting, we designated October fourteenth for our Hall of Fame induction. And again, you know, the community has an opportunity to nominate anybody that they think in the past, we've already got a couple. And, you know, this last year was probably one of the best we've had, so we're looking forward to that. But anybody has anybody in mind as a former athlete, coach? Or we even have a special category for someone that's done a lot for the school district even? That they can just put those nominations through to the athletic office? It's on the website, the form, and if not, you can call the athletic office and get information on how you can go about nominating somebody. So that'll be October fourteenth. Again, we'll have the breakfast for all the inductees and their guests. And then we'll go down to the field and, and do the induction before the football game. And that'll be around eleven or so, we'll be in there. So that's that. And I had one other thing I wanted to mention if I could. I think we, some of us saw an email from our radio and television station from Tim Lukaszewski. As you know, I'm the board liaison to the Rural Schools Association of New York. And when I was at the last conference, I noticed that they were doing a video contest. And right away, I sent it to Tim because I know what a great job they do. And I know that they would do really well. And I haven't gotten all the information now, but they took first place in that. There's a $500 award coming. The president of the Rural Schools Association is gonna come and make the presentation if he can when Tim and Alan and them decide when to have that. They also won second place in another category of the two things that they entered. And the one that they took first place for was on diversity in Ellenville. And it's just amazing, I can't wait to see the program. But kudos to them and of course, Lisa, I'd like to ask if we can get them to a board meeting to recognize those students.
Yeah, I'm gonna mention their names in my comments too.
Thank you very much, so, I'm sorry I stole your thunder on that.
No, 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 it's not my thunder.
It was just really a great thing, I kinda felt guilty bringing it to us 'cause I knew we'd win.
The students' thunder, we're very proud of them.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Lisa Ramirez on the arts.
I have nothing new to report since last week.
All right, thank you. That'd be it, and board membership, Iris?
Yeah, I just, I had spoken to Vince about the entrances and the 3D diagrams that we have. So it isn't clear to me what this is going to look like. So I'd like to get a copy next week, if possible, of a line drawing of what those entrances are gonna look like. I just wanna be sure we're doing what we intend. Thank you.
One thing I wanted to add, I would like the policy committee to take a look at our acceptable usage policy and see if that needs to be tightened up.
acceptable usage policy and see if that needs to be tightened up in one of your next meetings.
Online.
Talking about online acceptable usage for our students and staff.
Yes, and we also have to finish up on the code of conduct.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Jack Henry is not here. He must still be out in his correspondence across the globe. We look forward to seeing him soon. Did you have something? I'm sorry, did anybody else have anything? Nope. And we'll go on to Superintendent Lisa Wiles.
So Jack Henry did come to the office today. There was conflicts because of the move of the board meeting to tonight, but he will definitely be at the next one with a full report. I just want to dovetail on what John was saying about the students, so the students that participated were in grades ten through twelve. We will have them come to the board, but their names are Maya Espinoza, Elijah Robinson, Michelle Wang, and Amelia Benjamin. Those were the four students that were involved. And I really want to thank Mr. L. and Mr. Buckler. Whenever there are opportunities to showcase our kids, they do with great success, and it's great, and we're very proud of them. I also want to report that we have two snow days left. Hopefully, we're done with this weather. We have two weeks till spring, two and a half weeks till spring break. The long-term forecast looks promising, getting a little warmer, but we do have two days left. At the March twenty-eighth board meeting, they will, the Yearbook Committee wants to come and do their annual picture and some headshots of the board, so please plan accordingly. They'll be here on the twenty-eighth. And then in response to a request from the last meeting, we've asked, we have asked S.R. Ocondi to be on Maple Avenue during elementary dismissal. He will be there between three-thirty and four o'clock every day. He was there Monday, was a little late getting there today, but he knows that that's his assignment, to assist in the, the traffic flow and students crossing in the afternoon. We are looking for more security, and we'll have more updates for you as that happens. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Napoli.
I have nothing to report tonight, sir.
Thank you. Deputy Superintendent Kelly White.
Good evening. I just want to remind the school community that on Tuesday, March twenty-first, we have a Superintendents Conference Day. This is our Superintendents Conference Day slash Staff Wellness Day. We're focusing on social, emotional well-being of our staff, so they have a series of activities in the morning and professional learning workshops, and then in the afternoon, they have some additional planning, collaboration time built into their day. So this event was a huge success for our staff last year. It really built morale and allowed us to end the year on a positive note, and we're excited to be able to bring that back for them this year.
Thank you. Move on to Personnel Resolutions for this evening. Be it resolved that the resignation, excuse me, be it resolved that upon a recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, resignation of Tiffany Fernandez from her Cafeteria Monitor position be accepted. Close of business effective March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, purpose of accepting a teacher aide position.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor?
Oh, excuse me? If I can brag for a minute, I just want to say Tiffany was one of my former students in the Beacon City School District, and she really struggled at times, and I'm so proud of her, that she's worked her way up to here, so I think she's gonna do a great job with us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Sofia Viera be appointed to a 1.0 full-time equivalent teacher aide position at a contractual rate of $27,044 per rated. It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Natalie Evans be appointed to a 1.0 full-time equivalent teacher aide position at a contractual rate of $27,044. It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the following coaches for the spring be approved as indicated for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Pending certification. The list has been moved.
Second.
Second, discussion. John?
Have we gotten numbers of students out for these sports? Lisa?
We do. I just want to see if he, yes, there's an attachment. So far, modified baseball is fifteen, modified softball sixteen, modified boys track eleven, modified girls track nine, and JV baseball sixteen. So there's an attachment of a document and a resolution. You can see all of that. And there might be more now. I'm not, not positive I didn't get.
That's great.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Resolve the Ellenville Central School District Board of Education nominate Marla Kaplan to fill the three-year term in the Ulster County Bosse's Board.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Be resolved that Kelly White be appointed as a school lunch hearing officer for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved the attached list of junior, senior high school extended day programs be approved at contractual rate for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that the memorandum of agreement between the Ellenville Central School District and ETS RPA Teachers Unit be approved as attached.
So moved.
Been moved.
Second.
Second, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be it resolved the following substitute personnel be appointed for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Caitlin Sherry and Elizabeth Matrician.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. John?
For Vince and Lisa and Kelly, I mean, everybody's short. We, we keep saying that. Far be it for me to suggest this, but is it time that we up the salaries again to try and be more competitive? I mean, I think we're down to one or two certified teachers on the sub-list, you told me?
Yeah, we don't have a lot of certified teachers. We have had a better go of it this year with uncertified teachers. I honestly just don't think we have certified teachers out there. There's a, there's a huge shortage right now of certified teachers for teaching positions. So where you used to be able to pull for people looking from jobs, for jobs, there's, there's such a small pool. So I don't, I'm not, I don't think this is a pay issue. I think this is a, you know, a supply issue.
And I'm assuming that there are days where we have a lot of positions unfilled because of a lack of subs.
Luckily, we have the Pay for Prep, the Pay for Duty, that helps us a lot. Really, without that, we would really have a lot of issues, but for the most part, we're doing better this year than we did last year.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And I will abstain. Move on to Education Resolutions for this evening. Resolve the attached list of IEPs be acknowledged as appropriate. There are twenty-three.
Move the list.
Second.
List has been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Resolve that the following volunteers be approved for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Kathleen Burns and Reginald Steele.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Resolve the Aerospace Club be created and approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Iris?
Could you clarify a little bit? You know, I read the information that was there, but I was just curious who the advisor would be and, you know, what the, what the routine will be for this club.
I'm not sure about the advisor, because if the board approves, the club will post for it.
Oh, and it wasn't an adult advisor who came to you and said they'd like the club? It was the students.
The students brought this forward.
Right, right.
So, we'll have more clarification, you know, as we move forward.
I also appreciate that you gave us the list of the extracurricular activities, and I do see that a lot of, there's quite a number that don't have advisors that aren't active